I call the regular city council meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2013 to order. Councilwoman Deaton, would you please introduce this in the closing?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mayor Potem Deaton.
Here.
Councilman Levitt.
Here.
Councilman Shanks.
Here.
Councilman Sung. Here. Approval agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. The city manager, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, mayor, the only change I had tonight was under Agenda Item B, which is minutes from a couple different meetings with respect to the council workshop on the Old Town Parking Study on November 18th. There's a revision to those minutes, which you should have a copy in front of you on the day. Other than that, no changes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any changes?
No changes tonight.
Do any council members wish to make any changes or reorder the agenda?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, please vote. That's past 5-0. There are no presentations tonight or communications. At this time, members of the public may address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the staff and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk. Anyone who wishes to address this statement in council, please come to the podium.
Hi, my name's Matt Murfree, 1713 Crestview Avenue. This is for, I can give this to the clerk to hand the phone over. The reason I'm coming up here is to talk about a matter that's been going on in my life and the city's life since 2008. I've lived at 1713 for almost 10 years, and I have a large eucalyptus tree in my backyard that sits in Gum Grove Park. If you've visited the park, you're familiar with these trees. Nonetheless, in 2008, I discovered I have my arborist friend in my yard. We were drinking a beer at a barbecue, and we realized that the eucalyptus tree was encroaching on the power lines in my backyard. And he thought it was a good idea that eucalyptus trees and power lines shouldn't necessarily co-mingle. So I asked him if he'd cut my tree for me. He said he would. He'd done a lot of work for the city in the past. He's since passed. Great guy. Nonetheless, I went down to the city and spoke to the powers that be about this matter. I had to come back twice. The second time I came back, we identified the fact that the arborist would actually have to, in this particular case, because my backyard goes into a slope into the park, that in order to cut this tree, particular tree, we would have to actually use a loader or some type of equipment accessing Gum Grove Park. All right? Well, at that particular time, one of my neighbors up the road had done some damage to some trees during some construction. There was a feeling of discontent among members of the community about using Gum Grove Park as an accessway for construction. And nonetheless, I was told that I would need to go get a coastal commission permit in order to have my arborist, who I was planning to pay, come trim basically your tree. All right? I thought this was unsatisfactory, whatnot, whatever. Time had gone on, and a few years later, in 2011, during a windstorm, kind of like what we had today, a large portion of that tree came down and took out my fence and my neighbor's fence. That's when I called the city. The arborists came out, they responded, they had several conversations and whatnot. At the end of the conversation, you know, I felt that basically, after what I'd been through, warning the city about this particular tree and the issues involved, that it was the city's tree. Well, if it was my neighbor's tree to my left, and his tree fell on my car, then it was going to be his fault, he'd have to pay for the damage to my car. If it was my other neighbor, and the tree fell on my car or my fence, it'd be their responsibility. We had already established that this was the city's tree. I wasn't allowed to trim the tree, nobody wasn't our responsibility to do so, or pay to do it. The tree refused, the city refused to do it for their reasons. Nonetheless, we had damage, and we could not come to an agreement. I had two meetings with the city manager and Mr. Crumby here over a period of, excuse me, nine months, and we discussed this issue. The terms that I kept hearing back from these individuals, our city management, was that we couldn't set a precedent in paying for such things. The city refused to pay, it was under a thousand dollars. And the matter quickly became more about, you know, what was right and wrong in this particular case. And the city claimed they had no responsibility for that tree. And I had warned both the city manager and Mr. Crumby that if we put this in front of a judge, that they're going to lose. It was very simple math. I thought there was something wrong with me, that something had changed in the world where a neighbor wasn't going to be responsible for their tree. Well, in front of you is the judgment that I got to 2012 by a judge who did set precedence that it is your tree, all right, and you are responsible for it. Okay? Now, I know there's discussion and debate about who's responsible it is to cut the tree, whether it's Edison or whoever it is, but today I've got photographs and video footage of my tree, which is now 10 feet above the power lines, literally holding up a power pole. I've got video footage of the wind blowing and this tree literally shaking these poles. My question is, at what point am I going to have a fire? At what point is somebody going to get hurt? Is coastal property going to be involved? At what point is the city going to step up and basically do what they need to do and take care of their trees? All right? That's all I want to say. I appreciate it. Thank you, city manager, thank Sean for talking to me. I know there's more to this discussion, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Good evening, Patty Campbell, College Park East. Tonight, you all are going to reorganize the council, and I wanted to thank Gary for his past year of service to our city. I think he's done a very admirable and professional job as mayor. I also want to thank him for all the time he put in, or he has put in, on OCTA. When OCTA announced their plans to take our wall, it wasn't a matter of all of us getting mobilized. Gary did more. He made it his business to get on the OCTA board, where he would have a vote, and that is what was most important, and he did that. And he has been relentless in representing College Park East, the city, Rossmore, Los Al, all of us in this area, who are going to be so impacted by this project that they want to put through, that after today's meeting, we decided to stick with Alternative One. We were all just boggled how they could put forth a project without thinking it through. I mean, to want to build all these lanes of the freeway and then end them all at the county line. It's like, what were they thinking? Did it ever occur to them that people might want to go beyond the county line and keep going? No, they just stopped it right there. And, I mean, those of us that have been involved in it, we look at it and we go, what are these people thinking? I mean, it's been amazing. And today, we went to the OCTA meeting, and I guess I was a little hung off, and Supervisor Spitzer said, "Well, we can do whatever we want." And I said, "No, you can't. You've been elected to represent people, and that's your job. It's not what you want, it's what they want. And if you don't do what they want, you don't get reelected. It's as simple as that." And also, the chair is not elected, he has no constituency, he's appointed by the board to represent the general public. And the general public has been screaming loud and clear, "We do not want tolls." And I said to him, "You do. If you, we're appointed to represent the people, and if you can't represent the people, maybe you need to step down." But I think today, they finally got the message that the people do not want tolls. People have been paying in to Measure M for years, and it's their money, and they have a right to use whatever lanes are built with that money, not the wealthy who want to just, you know, drive free, drive, you know, in easy lanes. So we fought the good fight, it's still not over, but I want to commend Gary for all his efforts, because he has been so involved, and he has been relentless in following it to the T. It consumes him day and night. So he is, those of you out there, you have no idea how dedicated he is, and the efforts that he puts forth on behalf of all of us here. I want to thank you, Gary.
I just want to tell you, Patty, that Councilman Levitt has been there for a year and a half with me, fighting the battle. You may not be on the board, but he's been there fighting with me, so don't give me all the praise, Mike did a lot, too.
No, but you made it your business to get on the board, and that's where you have the vote.
He voted for me.
Hmm?
He voted for me.
Well, you voted for him, but still, I mean, I'm just so thrilled that you took it that extra step. That's what's so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. He voted 10 bucks you promised her.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and everyone here. My name is Deb Machin, I live at 309 Spinnaker Way in Seal Beach, and I'm currently the Chair of the Seal Beach Community Thanksgiving Dinner. And I just wanted to give a short report, if I may, on that. It was a wonderful success, and it was the 34th Annual Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce and St. Anne's Thanksgiving Dinner, held at St. Anne's Church on 10th Street. We served more than 160 guests, who would have otherwise had no one with whom to spend this wonderful holiday. All of the food and supplies were donated by local businesses and individuals. Over 300 cans of food were collected in the food drive, and will have gone already to food finders. Guests who needed a ride to the event received door-to-door transportation, provided all by volunteer drivers. Our guests were then greeted at the door by the Miss Seal Beach Court, all dressed as pilgrims and Indians. I'm not sure if that's PC, but that's what we did. And it was wonderful, and all of the guests absolutely loved it. They were then photographed with those same beautiful girls, and the photograph was then processed and given to them in a beautiful frame, along with a candle, all donated by Run Seal Beach. It was amazing. Many of the guests wept, they were so impressed, and their hearts were so warmed by all of it. They were also given a goodie bag with donations that were collected at The Sun newspaper by many of our businesses in Seal Beach. And new to the event this year was live music that was provided by Mike Harvey on drums and Tim Reed Jr. on keyboard, and they played some older tunes and a lot of Christmas tunes, and it was so amazing for all of our guests and volunteers as well. So it really set a really nice ambiance and mood for the whole event. The kitchen ran seamlessly, led again by Seth Eager, who swears to me this time, no, he really means it, it's the last time that heaven's doing it. So we brought in support for next year. Diana and Gary Bean were there, learning all day under Seth's tutelage, and they will be taking over next year. So they'll be heading up the kitchen staff next year, and they'll do a lovely job, they did amazingly well this year. More than 75 volunteers came out to support the dinner in our community, and I want everyone to know that without all of the businesses and organizations and individuals who either donated and/or spent their time and volunteered, this event couldn't happen. This event, literally, I started working on it two months ago with my co-chair, Mary Ann Harvey, and it takes, it really, truly takes a village to feed 160 people. Every single piece of silverware, every piece of food is donated by different people, and it's an amazing, heartwarming thing to be a part of, and I feel very blessed to have been a part of it again this year. There was more than enough delicious food for all of our guests, and all of the volunteers that were interested in eating, and all leftovers were donated to Interville House, who picked it up that day. And I just wanted you all to know, thank you so much for supporting it, and I'm looking forward to chairing it again next year. And if I have just another minute, I'd just like to thank the city for partnering with the chamber for the most amazing Christmas tree lighting event ever this year. It was over the top, and I'd like to also thank Frank Harvick Hall and Rosie Ritchie for chairing the, co-chairing the event, and everybody who was a part of it. The city was a huge part of this as a partner, and if I can just call him out, we couldn't have done it without him. So thank you so much. And so many others in the city as well. Main Street Lighting, I mean, speaking of lighting, the new lights on Main Street are amazing. It is like a little Norman Rockwell Christmas out there, and it's going to be that way all year long. And as well as being functional, they were implemented professionally and with as little interruption to parking and patronage for our shops as possible. So thank you so much from all of our businesses. We really appreciate it. And finally, I'd like to recognize and thank the Seal Beach Lions Club and the city for a phenomenal Christmas parade. I think probably all of us were there and would agree that everyone had an amazing time. So thank you so much. And finally, to the Seal Beach Police Department for continuing to keep us all safe and to let us forget that those measures are necessary, we aren't even aware of it, and we are able to just have a wonderful festive time at all of these events without thinking about that, because you guys all do that for us. So thank you all.
Good evening, council, mayor, members of staff, the public, Seth Eager, Old Town. Once again, wearing multiple hats. Wow, OCTA, I'll start there. I'm so thankful Mara Feinberg, my co-chair of governmental affairs, was there. I saw her on Channel 5 on a video clip, so that was good, and I hear she was quite prepared. I think it's really, I echo Patty Campbell's comments, it's really affirming to know that not only has Mayor Miller been on it, but obviously so has Councilman Levitt, the whole council and city staff has been heavily engaged in this issue. I know that I participated in a corridor cities working group, that the OCTA couldn't even be bothered to attend, other than the members who were from corridor cities, like Mayor Miller, who was there. So I think that's a win. I think that means that we, as a business community, continue to stand behind the city and our local business community that opposes toll roads. We will continue to maintain that posture. Though that decision has been made, we should continue to be alert. As a matter of clarification, Mayor Miller, I just wanted to address that unfinished business should also be addressed during oral communications. Is that correct?
No, well, anything, yeah, you're correct. Oral communications, other than Item J, this is the time to address anything on the agenda tonight.
Okay, great.
For oral communication.
I just wanted to confirm that. I think Deb really covered the bulk majority of the thank yous from the chamber. As the PR co-chair of the Christmas parade, I'm pleased to announce it was the largest ever, 120 entries, 3,818 participants, give or take a few Girl Scouts brownies or daisies, I think. It was done in really almost record time, we did it in about an hour and 47 minutes. We had four great announcers, incredible sponsors, in particular, Southline Credit Union, it really stepped forward this year to be a major sponsor of that, along with tree lighting and some other organizations. So the Lions Club is really pleased with the success of the Christmas parade, and Lions Club also would like to specifically recognize the city of Seal Beach for its tireless partnership and contribution. You know, Belmont Shore, other communities hire very large firms and pay a great deal of money to produce these events, and we actually produce it at cost neutral or a slight benefit that goes back into the community. And that's really, in large part, because of the commitment that the city has for this event. So the Lions wanted to acknowledge that. From the business community side, wow, those lights, Main Street corridor businesses, really haven't heard much negative feedback at this point, really only positive feedback. Best tree lighting ever, back when we started with the cone of light, some of city staff and council and the public will remember, a little cone of light wrapped around that palm tree and trying to throw the switch, and my goodness, we had toboggan rides now, and we have snowmen built up, and Run Seal Beach donating snow, and jazz choirs, and performance, and it's all just magical. As not being emcee this year, it was a privilege to hand the mic over to Scott Newton, who chairs the parade, so that he could talk for a change and really get into the holiday spirit, and he did such an amazing job. The chamber also wanted to acknowledge the fact that there is some office space. I know that was discussed during closed session, but I did want to address to council that the chamber would be deeply appreciative of any consideration that we could have for larger space as we continue to produce events and grow as an organization in a variety of levels, that added space could make a big difference. The chamber did have a prepared statement in regards to ordinance 1631-U, and I'll read from the president. In regards to the ordinance number 1631-U, the chamber would like to thank staff for taking time to research solutions and situations. The chamber supports a required CUP for sale and distribution of electronic cigarettes, as this would help prevent stores from overreaching their permitted sales and allow for adequate code enforcement. However, from a business standpoint, we would hope the businesses seeking a CUP and meeting all of the qualifications would be approved in a timely manner. And that's a quote from Diana Brunch's president, she's sorry she couldn't be here. I would amplify that by saying, upon review, it appears to me that staff has presented a fairly reasonable, although fairly restrictive, set of restrictions to this CUP. Distancing requirements, public parks, fairly strong restriction against, say, the Main Street specific plan area. And I also would caution the council, I think there is, in the public's eye, we don't want to blur the line between drug paraphernalia and e-cigarettes. I think that needs to be a bright line. Thank you so much. So again, just, please consider the business needs.
If there's anyone else that would wish to speak on any items tonight, this is the time to speak. Otherwise, we only have the building standards and uniform code that we'll have a public hearing on later. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I declare all communications is now closed.
Gary.
What? Did you want to speak? Please.
You're part of Concorde that is, didn't you?
No.
My name is Murthy Balayan, and I have a business at 4,000 Land Center Avenue, Seal Beach. It's a Chevron gas station, I think one of the best gas stations in the town. I'm here to oppose the staff recommendation on electronic cigarette. The staff has three things. One is that they are telling us that the electronic cigarette is a drug-related item. That is incorrect. Staff also found that currently no state or federal regulation regarding the electronic cigarette. As I think everybody knows, who is in touch with the news, that state and federal governments are aggressively, aggressively working on the electronic cigarette issue. Third thing is, says the particular concern, is the addictive properties of nicotine. Electronic cigarette does not, many electronic cigarettes does not have a nicotine inside. Now, staff, staff is saying that as long as electronic smoking devices are not marketed user-controlled substance, they are not considered drug paraphilia, subject to the ordinance prohibition. These electronic cigarettes, I brought it to the, I brought purposely to show that these cigarettes cannot be used for any drug purpose. They are, we are not dealing with the rechargeable liquid or herbal filling units. We are using mainly the disposable and rechargeable cigarettes, which can use only to refill the cartis, it cannot be used any other purpose. If they are used, they will not work. Then the drugs are used by the vax and herbs units, and we don't deal in those. And then these electronic cigarettes, they are avoiding secondhand smoking, because they are not releasing smoke, it's a vapor. And if we, if the staff recommendation is accepted, then every small, small station, gas station, or seminole, or anybody that has a cigarette fixture of four by four, that is the smallest fixture required by every cigarette company to sell the tobacco. If I want to sell tobacco, I need to put a four by four fixture, that is the smallest. Then I'll be coming under the definition of a smoke shop, and I'm not a smoke shop. To stay in business, tobacco is the biggest category, and we follow all the law, we follow all the regulation, we follow the tax, make sure it's stamped, make sure it's made in the United States, every single rule we follow. But if that definition is accepted, then we will be put in the corner. Getting the CUP, then paying the fees, and we are already very close. I have the golf course nearby, I have the tennis court nearby, and I don't know what other condition can be placed on me. So if this ordinance is accepted as it is, I'll be out of business. I cannot survive with this definition. If I remove the fixture, then I don't have business of the tobacco category. And I already have an agreement with the RZNL, with Philip Morris, with Newport, and other cigarette companies, that all maintain the four-foot fixture. And that four-foot fixture is for the display purpose. It has some advertisement and some product, but the way staff is recommending and defining, I am the first one, that will be in the smoke shop category. If you want to ban, ban the electronic cigarette, put a separate condition, don't generalize the regular tobacco product. So the regular tobacco product is the main source of business, this is the new item. If staff recommends stop this, we will stop this. If you want to put a condition, don't sell it to the minor, anyway we don't sell it to the minor. sell it to the minor. If I want to put that anything's related to drug-related, define it clearly, don't be ambiguous, we will stop that. But please, I request, not to define us under the smoke shop category, four by four fixture, that's not a correct definition of the smoke shop.
Your time's almost up. Did you have a concluding remark?
My concluding condition is, please, don't make us run out of the business. This is our bread and butter, don't accept this condition modified. Thank you, if you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer, I have the proof to show you the electronic cigarette if I have any question.
Okay, I have one question for you. You said the smallest amount of display area that you are allowed by the cigarette companies is a four by four, is that per brand?
No ma'am. Only four by four fixture, every band has to share.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'm confused, is that what you have now, four by four?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sanjeev, and I'm a franchisee for seven eleven at twelve one Pacific Coast Highway. You know, I'm talking about the same issue with the electronic cigarettes, means it's good to regulate them because there's not that many regu... means nobody is right now regulating it, neither the state or the federal. So, but they are working on doing it, but as a responsible retailers, we are already treating as a tobacco, and putting the same conditions on the sale, we don't, that somebody has to be over eighteen, and all the tobacco conditions which are followed by the other tobacco. But the thing is, the, but the staff is, uh, you know, recommending, doesn't make a sense, somebody can have a CUP, and then can display those, he can have a big sign out there saying tobacco shop or smoke shop, and then he can sell whatever he wants to sell in there, but because you are a convenience store, then you are limited to it. You can have, go into the city, you can have the stores, you know, which sell the liquor and the beer and all those things, they can have a whole wall of it, but we cannot have a display, and we won't be able to, after the staff's recommendation, I won't be able to even apply for a CUP because I'm close to the park. And I'm there for, that store has been there for thirty-one years, if we, in the thirty-one years, was not a problem, we shouldn't be a problem today either. So, those are the things, you know, you guys need to take into the consideration, you know, when you want to accept those recommendations or whatever you need to do to amend those. Thank you.
Is anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I declare all communications closed again. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council, in the closed session, discussed items identified on the agenda. The city council gave direction to the city attorney, the city, uh, the council also gave direction to its negotiator, and there was no other report of action taken, and that meeting adjourned at six forty-five.
The city manager, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, given that tonight's our last meeting of the calendar year, on behalf of the staff, I wanted to wish the council and our community a belated Happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year, and based on that, just a reminder to our public that, um, thanks to the graciousness of our council and, and part of our labor negotiations process, um, once again this year, we will be closed, uh, for, between Christmas and New Years, um, with the exception of our, our public safety staff, our fire, uh, police and marine safety staff, it's, uh, regular work for them. Our city hall and maintenance yard will be closed. Um, on our website, we also have a press release posted with respect to, um, street sweeping as well as trash collection, and the minimal hours and days that our, uh, building counter will be open for building inspections, and would encourage the public, um, to check our website for that information, or call city hall at five six two four three one two five two seven, um, for that update, and we'll see you next year. That's all I have.
Do any council people wish to make a...
Uh, yeah, I would like to end up closing this council meeting later in the evening in the memory of Mitzi Morton, uh, Councilwoman Deaton is going to go in some detail, but to those of us who have, I've been in, working for this city for, not on the council, but for forty-two years, and for many years, she was one of the people that helped us keep Seal Beach the small town it is, and she was a hard worker, she did things that she felt to try to keep Seal Beach the way we wanted it to be, which, and so, uh, all of those will miss her, and Councilwoman Deaton has more detail on her life than I do, but I certainly know what she did for Seal Beach.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to take the opportunity to thank you for your role that you did in the toll road. I'm sure that, uh, in fact, I felt kind of like we ended up with the camel's nose under the tent when we got, uh, Mayor Miller on the board of the OCTA, and, uh, Gary, we really appreciate it, you've done a great job as representing us with the toll roads, and I, I really want you to know, we appreciate it, and, uh, also, Mr. Levitt, you tagged right along, and you contributed, and appreciate your efforts also. And I'd like to wish everybody, my, from my family to yours, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Well, it is with very sad, um, feelings that I come to you tonight and tell you that Mitzi Morton has passed. She, uh, moved to our city in the early sixties, uh, her husband, uh, Warren survives her, he will be ninety-one, uh, ne... in February. He actually built many of the homes that they lived in, and Mitzi was very, very active in our community. A few of the things that she was an activist about was, um, having the green belt there instead of condos. Can you imagine what Seal Beach would look like today with condos there instead of a green belt? She also served on the Main Street specific plan, and helped, uh, keep our small-town businesses small-town instead of big-town. She also worked on our peer committees to make sure that the peer did not, um, end up with another Ferris wheel and another roller coaster and all that. Uh, she worked on two-story, three-story, making sure that the houses in our small community fit our small community. She was all about keeping Seal Beach Seal Beach. Every once in a while, my son-in-law will drive up from San Marcos, and he'll come into town and he'll say, "To you guys that live here, do you look around, do you see where you live? Do you get it? It is completely different than any place else, and you need to work hard to keep it." And that's what Mitzi did. So, um, it's with a very heavy heart, she was a friend of mine, and, um, it's with a very heavy heart that I say that she has passed. I do want you to know that she is survived by Warren, her husband, Michelle, her daughter, Brandy, her granddaughter, and four great-grandchildren. So, um, with that, I'd like to move on to, um, a couple of other announcements, and that is, I want to ditto the tree lighting. Wow, I thought I was in the mountains, we had tobogganing, we had real sleds, we had four kids coming down at a time, it was really fun. And, again, it was a partnership, and the partnership that this city and the businesses and the volunteers have created in this town is Seal Beach, it's what makes us who we are. The city, um, Tim, thank you and your staff, really do a great job, the Lions Club did a great job, the Chamber did a great job, and we all came together as a community, and we lit that tree. So, it was a great time, and the parade, I don't need to say anymore, and I want to really, I always say thank you, Sean, to you and your team for what you're doing, but tonight, I just really have to say thank you to Michael Ho. You are not out here at one in the morning, but Michael Ho was out here at one in the morning to make sure those lights could be on for Christmas Parade. So, Michael, wherever you are, I want, there you are, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Just a seasonal greeting again, as everyone else has said, hope you all have a very prosperous New Year, have a great Christmas, and for those of us who thought Hanukkah came way too early this year, I didn't have time to even get one gift, let alone eight, have a great next New Year.
Okay, I, I have a couple of things, um, last Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to the Joint Forces Training Base, and attend the promotion of Brigadier General Keith Jones to Major General Keith Jones. Uh, General Jones lives in Surfside, and, uh, we've really enjoyed working with him, he's now the commander of the Fortieth Infantry Division. I attended on behalf of the city, and former mayor Patty Campbell also attended that meeting. Uh, Congressman, Congresswoman Loretta Sanchez was there, and State Senator Lou Correa, and it was a very big event, very enjoyable, we were all in the hangar because it was raining outside. And I, as wrapping it up as, uh, mayor for this year, I want to thank a number of people, our, our city clerk, who helps me with every council meeting that I've been at and, uh, saw over, and every, every council meeting we prepare, by, I meet with the city manager and city attorney, go over the agenda for the night and what we're going to accomplish, and I also work with the city manager in advance on all the agenda items that are coming, and your help is very appreciated, it helped me get through this, uh, busy time when I was doing OCTA on the same day. My day starts at nine o'clock in the morning with OCTA, and finishes with nine o'clock tonight, I hope. Anyway, I appreciate that, I appreciate the help of the, uh, chief of police, the chief of marine safety, all the directors, you've all been a great deal of help, and the city engineer, I haven't forgotten you, Michael, and, uh, everyone, it's, uh, it's a real pleasure, we have a great city, Jill has a great staff, and it makes it easy to be the mayor because we just have a lot of help, and I appreciate it, thank you. Also, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and with that, we'll move on to the next item. Give me a second to catch up with myself. Okay, council items, this is the, uh, council item A, which is the, uh, council policy one hundred dash oh-three. Um, the city manager, do you have a staff report?
Actually, the city attorney is going to present this item to you tonight.
Yes, Mayor, and council members, at the last goal-setting workshop, um, an issue was discussed among the council, and we were given direction to come back with some suggestions on the use of staff time by individual council members. Um, as you know, most of the business is directed by the council at council meetings, but there are occasions, when a big issue comes up, we call it an emergent issue, and for instance, let's say an issue comes up in the next week, and we don't have a council meeting until, uh, January thirteenth, um, there are certain issues that we need to address, both as the staff and also as the city attorney. And so, to address those issues, we've looked at other cities to see how they handle emergent issues, and in the staff report, we've given you a few examples. Uh, I'm not sure if the city of Irvine has actually adopted this, that they have an eight-hour rule, that if a individual council member approaches the city manager and, on a particular issue, which is an emergent issue, which has not been directed by the full council, in Irvine, if it's going to take more than eight hours, the city manager has the discretion to tell that individual council member, um, you have to put it on the agenda. We have other cities that require everything to go through the city council, and then there's the, um, cities that are in-between that perhaps use, say, four hours, four hours of staff time would be, um, the maximum that should be permitted, or, once again, so those are really the three separate options. Option number one would be you have an eight-hour rule, option number two would be a four-hour rule, and option number three is to have everything go through the city council with respect to staff time. One other issue that's just, uh, alluded to in the, um, staff report is also the use of city attorney time, and so you may want to consider addressing that issue tonight, or, um, establishing a same or similar rule with respect to the use of city attorney time by individual council members.
I have a couple of items to discuss here, do you want to...
Fine.
Okay, um, would you give me that, the slide? I, I do want to identify the, the key things that the council does, first, the, the mayor, you know, our interface with the city manager, the mayor basically is the ceremonial leader of the city, and also works with the city manager on council policy items. Go to the next, the, this is, this is key, that we don't interfere, we're trying to optimize the council's, uh, efforts and, and maybe educate the public to the fact that the city manager runs the city, the council can identify issues to the city manager, and the city manager then fits it into the schedule unless it's a high priority, and Jill, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And so, the key is that, that we need to, to make sure that we have a policy that, that works for us in the future, we don't have a problem at this time, but we just want to make sure we implement this the way we, uh, feel that, uh, we'd like to proceed from here on out, so that we don't, just because we have an item, uh, doesn't mean the city manager is going to do it, uh, from the public standpoint. I mean, I had my own items a few years ago, like a electric sign that was blinking, it took me six months to get the, the sign off, I had some curbs that needed painting, it was a different sit... situation, but I had to bring it to the council, so sometimes the council members can't always accomplish everything that you would like them to accomplish without either going to the city manager and waiting for that project to come up, or coming to the council and asking for it. With regard to that, I also, with regard to the city attorney, had a couple ideas that, that you may consider. I tried to put the city attorney in the same situation where we can call, and trust me, I call the city attorney often, I was, I was with Senate California Estim for thirty years, and eighteen years I dealt with city attorneys, so I'm, usually always want to make sure I'm doing the right thing. I just suggest that we maybe add this as a fourth item, and I, I'm thinking that we should limit the, the project time before you come to the council to four hours rather than eight hours, and our whole effort, in my opinion, is to make sure we streamline this for the city manager so we have a more efficient organization. Do you have any comments, Jill?
No, I think those are, they're good comments, I just want to make sure it's clear, though, that this is not as if you can't call and ask staff questions or inquire about things, this is more above and beyond that, where you've, through our goal-setting process twice a year, you've established the goals and priorities that you want your staff to accomplish, and those are above and beyond the day-to-day operations, and that we work on just running the city. I think what this is with respect to is, those things that take, besides those goals and priorities in our day-to-day operations, things that come up, emergent issues, that it's going to take more than a few hours, it's going to take more than just answering questions, um, and looking into something, it's going to take me time to work with my staff, which pulls us away from those other priorities, and so, I would concur, I think if, if we can adopt a policy and all of us, with consensus of the council, that we're going to agree that that's how we're going to operate, I think it'll be successful so that we can be effective and get everything done.
Yeah, by the way, this is from this, I don't know if I mentioned, this is from the city charter, and, and you can see there, it says you can, back, yeah, it says you can ask questions, except, uh, for the purpose of inquiry, the council and its members, uh, you know, it, it says that we can make inquiries. So, do you have any comments, Jordan?
Well, it... Do you have any preference over the four-hour limit as against the eight-hour limit, or do you think the four-hour limit would be satisfactory? Let me, let's put it that way.
My preference, given that there's five of you, would be to start with the four hours and see how we do.
And then, play it by ear, and if that doesn't work, go to eight.
Right.
And if that doesn't work, we'll go to sixteen.
David?
Yes, I'd like to agendaize, uh, say, in four months, with just a brief evaluation of, if, how this is working.
It's a good idea. Elroy?
Okay, uh, could I make a motion for the four-hour at this time? Would that be fitting?
It would be.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
I'll second.
I had a question, but, go ahead, Elroy.
Yeah, I second, and then I've got some questions.
Just wondering how, how you would come up with a hard and fast rule of four hours or eight hours, until you'd actually looked into the depth of the subject... hours until you'd actually looked into the depth of the subject to see what is necessary to work on it, to reach a conclusion on it. You might look at first like, oh, I can handle this, one staff person for two hours. And as you get into it, you find out it's far too convoluted and you can do nothing in even eight hours. How would you approach us asking you to do something if we don't really know how deep you have to go into it?
Well, I think that's where you need to lean on me and my guidance to you, just in discussion with you on whatever the issue might be. And it's going to be different depending on your districts and what issue might come up. And then I need time to talk with my staff. I mean, those are things, if we get into it and it's going to take more than four hours, then we come back and say, well, probably best that we agendize it for council discussion and get direction at that point.
Okay, so that initial discussion we'd have with staff would be part of the four hours?
Not my time, I work for you, so the clock's not ticking.
Oh, okay, all right. And it does say May, so you can do a project that's more than four hours if you so choose as the city manager.
And I think it should be, in terms of requiring four hours, it should be at the city manager's discretion in terms, because it's staff that I'm going to be working with to determine on any of those separate items. I mean, there might be some feeling on council's behalf, and not to say that that's not important, but I'm working with my staff to get that work done, so I could probably provide a better time estimate on that than some of you might be able to.
Again, it does say May, so you can do, if there's something that you think needs to be done, you can do it, even if it goes beyond four hours. I would ask, did you have anyone, Mike?
No.
I would ask that we include this regarding the Attorney, too?
Do what?
This provision that we also limit our time with the Attorney. We can ask him questions, but we don't take him projects without coming to the council.
I agree.
Yeah, I do.
You want to add your motion?
Okay, so we'll have...
Add your motion to add number four?
Okay, yeah, I will... Okay, let's...
The four hours.
...the City Attorney in there, but also the four-hour time limit on the City Attorney to staff time.
No, no four hours on the City Attorney. I mean, we can ask him questions and get inquiries, but there's no projects where you can go to him with a four-hour project.
I think that the important thing for us to think about is that this is over and above. I mean, we all have, all of the projects, for instance, that you might be working... Let's say, let's talk about the Pier Out on Ruby's. That's all red out on... The Pier Out on Ruby's, the Pier Restaurant. We're working on that. That's a work product. Now, if I wanted to go off and talk about blimps and I wanted to tie up the staff on blimps and they wouldn't be able to get to the restaurant, then what I've done is subvert what the council's direction is. So what this is, is to keep us focused and moving ahead so that one or two or three of us can't individually be running off and doing projects. Am I correct? Is that what it's about?
Exactly. And that's a very good point to emphasize because there are a number of things that have been directed by the council. You have policies. Definitely the staff will be spending time and the City Attorney will be spending time on those projects.
So I think it's just a method to make sure that we're doing the things that we know we want to do and we're not just running off with knee-jerk things. I am 100% in favor of this. I think it's great and thank you for adding the Attorney.
The thing is, as an example, the DWP property, we know we go beyond four hours easily. And on the 405 issue, we went beyond four hours. I mean, those are projects we're working on on behalf of the city, so...
Yeah. I still want the freedom to be able to call the Attorney and talk to him all weekend, if you want.
I like the anytime part. Anyway, then, is there a motion to approve this item with the revisions of four hours?
So, I mean, I made that...
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, please vote. That's through 5-0.
And just for clarification, that's where the insertion of four in paragraph two and the addition of paragraph four concerning the City Attorney.
Right, and also the four hours related to the city manager's time. Okay, items on... We're going to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items previously removed by the council, which there were none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? Still moved? Second? Please vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, public hearing. This is a time and a place for a public hearing for consideration of Item J, Ordinance Number 1634. Ms. City Manager, is there a report?
Yes, Mayor. Our Community Development Director, Jim Basham, will present this item to you tonight. And if you recall, this is a follow-up public hearing to a discussion that we had at our last council meeting. Jim?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. If you recall, as the City Manager introduced, this item was heard at your last city council meeting. It was the introduction of our 2013 Building Codes. Tonight is the actual hearing. After this ordinance is adopted, if it is the wishes of the city council, it would be effective come January 1st of 2014. And John Trall, my building official, is here to my right and will can answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Do any council members have any questions regarding this matter?
No.
Okay, then. I hereby open the public hearing. Any members of the audience who wish to speak on this matter, please come to the microphone and state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. Okay. Seeing no one, then I... Let's see. Are there any further council comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Still moved.
Second?
Mayor, before I vote, I need to read the title. Ordinance Number 1634, an ordinance of the City of Seal Beach adopting the 2013 California Building Standards Code and appendices and related model and uniform codes together with certain amendments and deletions and amending Title IX of the Seal Beach Municipal Code.
Okay, please vote. That passes 5-0. Okay, unfinished and continued business. Item K, Smoke Shops, Electronic Cigarettes and Drug Paraphernalia. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Again, our Community Development Director, Jim Basham, will be presenting this item tonight. Also, just for the council's benefit, want to remind you that you do not have a draft ordinance that's before you tonight for consideration. If you recall at your September 23rd council meeting, the council adopted an urgency ordinance for 10 months and 15 days to further study this issue. We also directed that we, that staff expedite that process and come to you as soon as we possibly can. So what we've got before you tonight is some research and recommendations from staff to update you on where we're at in that process. What we'd be looking for at the end of the discussion is either a council direction to come back with additional information or provide staff direction on the development of a draft ordinance to bring back to you at a later date. So with that, Jim?
Thank you. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The staff worked very closely with the City Attorney's Office to analyze as a new use electronic cigarettes. There are a number of studies that we analyzed. And even during this timeframe, from the extension of the moratorium in September, a number of cities have already moved forward quicker than we have to also establish regulations relating to tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes. Cities such as Long Beach, Cerritos, Bellflower, City of Los Angeles. There's aggressive movement, if you will, among local jurisdictions to at least address the issue. Given the fact that it is a growing trend, a lot of jurisdictions weren't prepared for electronic cigarette establishments in the jurisdiction. I think that we had a fair opportunity to at least analyze it. There are a number of discussion items that we have before this evening that will be part of the creation of the ordinance, which will come forth to you hopefully in the early years of 2014 or '15, the early days or months of 2014. The first is establishing for any land use, you have to at least be able to identify it, to clearly set as to the comparable factors of a use in any of our zoning classifications. So what we've identified as a smoke shop. We identified a smoke shop and that includes any tobacco shop, cigar shop, or cigarette shop, where it is a primary use of a product. We would analyze it as being, as a threshold, 16 square feet of a surface area, surface display area for any retail wholesale of a tobacco-related product, including electronic cigarettes. We further analyze a smoke shop as being a classification where we would allow such a use. We have to analyze this to what we believe is a comparable location in the city. We looked at our commercial zone locations. We looked at the primary locations being our major arterios, which would be Pacifico's Highway and Seal Beach Boulevard. Within those two major arterios, you have primarily the general commercial, GC, zoning designation, and also the SC, which is your service commercial zoning classifications, which allow various type of commercial-related uses. We figured that would be a comparable location to allow smoke shops. The second provision would be for regulations of such type of use is a conditional use permit. It is a fair process that we analyze for a use that we identify as not being permitted by right, meaning that there are some restrictions that a local jurisdiction would want to analyze on a case-by-case as such a use comes in for an application. Also, we looked at similar provisions that are established in our municipal code, which is the locational provisions. Establishing locational provisions typically is for the purpose of protecting your sensitive land uses such as churches, schools, parks, residences, as just an example. So our locational provision that we're looking at, that we believe is fair in regards to other uses that we've established in the municipal code, will be 1,000-foot radius from such use. So from use to use of a smoke shop that is identified as above 16 square feet of surface area selling tobacco-related products, including electronic cigarettes, is 1,000 feet from each use. In addition, we would request 1,000 feet of a distance between a school, park, and church, and also any public safety zone properties, which is commonly reflected as a PS zone. We also wanted to analyze other type of similar uses for which we believe we would structure as being prohibited, and that would be a smoke lounge or commonly referred to as a hookah lounge. Those type of uses were primarily engaged in not only just purchasing the product, but also engaged in smoking the product on the premises. We also wanted to analyze, just by driving through the city and visiting some of these locations that engage in ancillary sale of the product, is advertisement of such product. We currently have in our zoning ordinance a restriction in the signs section that restricts window signs to 20%. There's a number of businesses in the city that far exceed that, where primarily, as just an example, the entire window frontage is completely covered with the products that they're selling. That is an instance as in violation of the municipal code as an existing section in your sign ordinance. We also wanted to pay attention to uses that are existing in the city, that are retail establishments, that are primarily engaging in selling tobacco-related products, including electronic cigarettes in some cases, as an ancillary use. Ancillary meaning incidental, where your primary commodity that you're selling is something completely different. Retail establishment, it could be grocery store, it can also be, in this case, a gasoline station or liquor store. There are a number of uses that are existing in our city. I visit a number of them. On the average size, a display case is typically four feet high by maybe one foot in depth. But there are instances where a display case could be five feet high and the display surface is only two feet by one feet. So we believe that the average of describing at 16 square feet for those type of businesses that are engaging in ancillary use does not affect their entire commodity, perhaps as an example, gasoline station, where the primary commodity should always be as a gasoline station, selling and dispensing of gasoline. But in fairness, we're trying to establish an ordinance that doesn't outright prohibit the sale of electronic cigarettes. And that's important and key to the establishment of an ordinance, is being fair in the sense that if you wish to establish the sale of tobacco products, or in this case, electronic cigarettes, in conjunction with your business, we'll permit you to do that. We're asking that you limit the size of the surface display area. We're not prohibiting you from storing the tobacco product in your business. So it's not as if every commodity or product needs to be displayed openly. There are examples of just displaying a carton, just as an example, cigarette. There's no reason why pursuant to any contract that's established between retailer and a smoking industry. The pricing is necessary, apparently, according to their contractual agreement, but you don't have to display every cigarette carton upfront. So as long as you're displaying or advertising their business, you secure their contract. That's part of negotiation between the tobacco retailer and with the smoking industry. The other issue that I wanted to focus on is a growing issue, is whether or not the electronic cigarettes, along with tobacco-related products, should be also limited in use openly, such as in city hall, as an example, or in a restaurant. Our provisions are very relaxed in that regard. There's a number of jurisdictions in the state of California that have moved forward pursuant to the labor codes of establishing the standards as to which they wish to utilize in their jurisdiction. This was a discussion amongst the City Attorney Office and my staff, and we wanted to introduce that as a discussion item for the city council this evening. So that concludes my overview as a discussion item, what the proposed ordinance would entail. And certainly, if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Okay, council, would you have... Gordon, you have any questions?
No.
Councilman...
I just had one question. The 16 square feet, would that accommodate most people that are operating under that situation now?
I visit an operator in the city just today, and the operator owns a gasoline station. And when he and I met, I described what the surface area would be. His existing surface area is larger than 16 square feet. But after understanding what the smoking contract industries state, in order for them to secure, you know, their revenue and their contract, you have to display it of a certain area. After we discussed that and we figure out how it could be done, the operator was fine in stating that 16 square feet is something that he can work with. I think what's important in what we're analyzing and what I've noticed when I did visit a number of locations in the city that are selling the product as an ancillary, it was questionable as to whether or not it was even considered ancillary whereby the operator is primarily engaged in the selling of liquor and tobacco products. To me, I think this is an opportunity for us to limit as to what a retailer is establishing for tobacco-related products because there, some areas or display areas is quite large, I mean, excessively large, in my opinion. So I don't think that this is unfair in the approach that we're seeking, but I certainly do believe that it's something that we need to incorporate as part of the ordinance.
So if someone has 16 linear feet or less, then they don't need a CUP?
That's correct, Mayor Proten, but just let me clarify. It is 16 square feet of surface area. And under the proposed guidelines that we would establish in the ordinance, they would not require a conditional use permit. If they stay at 16 square feet of surface area and below, they would not be required to apply for locational provisions as well.
So a four-by-four display case that we were described earlier would most likely fall under the 16 since, you know, I know surface area is different than...
That's correct. And what we're analyzing is the amount of space that they're utilizing inside of the display case. The display case can be five feet by four feet. What we're going to analyze is the actual shelves that are inside of that display case, which is equivalent to your surface area. So they could stack as much as they want, if you will, within the display case, but they're going to be limited to a surface area of 16 square feet. Which is actually very lenient in that regard, but I think is fairness, and that's why I believe in meeting with one of the operators in the city, thought that that was fine.
Okay, so also if they have 16 surface, what do you call it? Square feet? Surface square feet or less, then they're not held to the distance requirements either.
That's correct.
That defines them as ancillary, meaning that that is not their primary business, and therefore it's just one more product that they're selling. and therefore it's just one more product that they're selling in their business, along with something else that may be primary, or with a whole lot of ancillary products?
Absolutely.
So, their business would continue as usual with no impact at all. The impact comes once they go beyond the sixteen square feet of surface area, and that's what pushes them into the C U P.
Absolutely.
Okay, could you for me, remind me of what are radiuses on adult businesses and alcohol sales are?
For adult businesses, it's a thousand square, it's a thousand-foot radius from use to use, and so it will be similar to what we are describing for discussion this evening. I believe for alcohol or liquor businesses, it is five hundred feet radius, and there are other provisions relating to alcoholic beverage, retail establishment that are set forth in the state alcohol beverage control requirements.
So, the five hundred feet would be from each other, as well as from churches, parks, and schools?
And residential. We did not include residential in our provision.
Okay, but for alcohol, five hundred?
They require to stay away from residential as well. We did not incorporate that, because that would be highly restrictive in this establishment.
So, how do we in Old Town get around that, then? Because we have liquor stores backing up the residential's.
Well, you also have what's called a specific plan that governs that area.
Well, we also have one at Fifth and Marina.
Again, I don't know, I would need to look into that, but I don't know how that would affect this business.
Well, my concern is, I don't want to be more restrictive on tobacco and e-cigarettes than we are on liquor.
And I think the establishment of being like-for-like, that's established for adult entertainment businesses, is similar.
Could you define what adult businesses are?
Well, there's a number of descriptions that's associated with it. It can be an adult business that sells adult paraphernalia. That typically is not inviting for someone.
What you're saying is, I don't want to go there, okay?
That would be correct.
All right, so, then I guess what I want to do is, since I would not put tobacco in that category, I feel like I can go there with tobacco. I would rather than look at the same restriction that we would have for alcohol for tobacco and e-cigarettes.
Well, that would mean to include residential, and you're being very restrictive then, because every one of our commercial locations on Seal Beach Boulevard and Pacifico's High would be impacted.
No, I wouldn't include residential in that.
You would not?
I'm not seeing that happening in Old Town, so I don't know about the rest of the districts, but I'm not seeing it five hundred from feet from residential. That's all, thank you.
Just wondering, I had read a report from the city of New York, and Mayor Bloomberg has just passed an ordinance that says tobacco products can only be sold to adults, only to persons over the age of twenty-one. And the mayor has included e-cigs, vapes, vapors, and the activity of vaping, all will now fall under, if you are under twenty-one, not eighteen, you won't be able to buy those products. Are we looking at eighteen or twenty-one for our sales here?
We're looking at eighteen.
All right, now, are we also waiting to hear from the federal government, from the EPA, I'm sorry, the F D A, as to whether the federal government is going to include e-cigs as part of a tobacco-related product?
Well, we know that forty states have already petitioned F D A to regulate electronic cigarettes, so it is a growing and profitable business, but it's becoming an issue in a lot of states and in jurisdictions, cities specifically. So, ideally, I would like to wait to see what becomes the outcome from F D A, but I think the regulations that we are discussing this evening are pretty strong, I think, and stable, and would help us to move forward in the direction of establishing permitting process for tobacco-related products, excuse me, products, including electronic cigarettes.
All right, so if the F, yeah, F D A, keep thinking EPA, like, do too much smoke, and then you're going into the EPA domain. If the F D A comes out with a stronger rule than we impose, do they have precedence over us?
Absolutely, as a federal entity, they could have preemption over us.
So, no matter what conclusion we reach within the next nine to ten months, that could be superseded by what the government, the big government says to the little government.
It could be.
All right, thank you.
I want to check now, this will come back as an ordinance?
Yes.
Will we be having a public hearing on at that time?
There's a portion of it, there will be a public hearing before the planning commission and the city council, and that's with respect to the distancing requirements that have been described by the director. The rest of it will be in a different part of the municipal code, and there'll be no public hearing.
Well, we, tonight we're just giving directions, so we really won't be voting on anything tonight.
That's correct, we just want to get the direction from the council on the issues that were identified by Jim.
I'm sorry, Quinn, what parts won't be having a public hearing?
Pretty much the entire ordinance, with the exception of the C U P requirement and the distancing requirements.
So, the sixteen square foot is an administrative?
Yeah, that'll go in a different part of the code, yes. That's similar to what we have with respect to adult uses, and I think massage parlors, but I'm not sure about that, where you have, under the, what we call the health, welfare, and safety section of the municipal code, you have regulations, but then you have some zoning considerations, and so the zoning considerations have to go to the planning commission and the city council and have a public hearing.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. If you have tobacco sales and you have e-cigarettes, are the combination limited to the sixteen feet, or is it each one is limited to sixteen?
No, it's combined.
Okay, so if you're selling both, you're limited to sixteen?
Yes.
The other thing is, in my opinion, I would like to see these regulated the same way as cigarettes, exactly. I mean, not only, I didn't see it here necessarily, but, you know, as you can, as an example, you can't smoke them in the council chamber, you can't, you know, same state restrictions. Well, is that planned to be applied the same way?
If it is the wishes of the city council, then staff would work with the city attorney to include that in this ordinance, where they address smoking cigarettes or tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, in public places, i.e. restaurants.
Yeah, does anybody have an opinion of that? Would you want to go to a restaurant and have somebody smoking an e-cigarette next to you?
Well, I have a problem in introducing this, because as I understand it, right now we're being governed by state law, and I'd like to just stay under state law. I don't want...
I'm not creating our own, I'm saying, apply the same state law to the e-cigarettes as tobacco.
We don't, why don't you answer that? Because I may understand it wrong, but I understand we don't have tobacco laws.
We must.
Yeah, I should address that, and Jim can concur or amplify it. Yeah, in Seal Beach, we rely on state law with respect to cigarettes, and so it's public places, I think it's twenty feet from the doorways of public places, and it's most restaurants, but there are some exceptions for really small restaurants, but under state law, most restaurants you cannot smoke. We also have, the only additional, the only additional ordinance in Seal Beach on smoking is it's prohibited at the beach and on the pier, and maybe parks, I'm not sure about parks, but definitely the beach and the pier.
I'm okay, then, with adding it as far as the e-cigarettes being treated the same as we treat tobacco, but I am not in favor of changing or enacting any further regulations on the use of tobacco.
Okay, if that's very clear, and that's, if that's the consensus of the council, we can draft the ordinance accordingly.
Well, let me make another question, then, because you just said the pier and the beaches, but how about Walt's Wharf? Can you walk in there and have an e-cigarette or a cigarette? So, what law is applying to that? State law, right?
State law, yes.
Okay, so state law would apply to this, if we so chose to do it.
Yes. And just to clarify, because there was some confusion about what goes to the planning commission, what goes to the city council, the entire ordinance will come to the city council, it's just a portion of it has to go to the planning commission first.
But my question was public hearing.
Yes, and so the public hearing is just on the zoning code recommendations, but if we're going to have that ordinance all at the same time, you'll have a public hearing.
And Mr. Mayor, just as a point of clarification, if someone walks into a restaurant currently, depending on the number of folks that are employed pursuant to the state law, then they would not be able to smoke a cigarette, but it does not mean electronic cigarette could not be smoked. It would be up to the restaurant operator or owner to say that that is not acceptable in my restaurant. So, that's why I think, just as clarification, direction from the city council to treat it the same, we would incorporate provisions in the draft ordinance that would say in public places, electronic cigarettes would also be included the same as tobacco or e-cigarettes.
Is that okay with the council? I don't want to suggest it, if we're not going to agree to it later. Okay, well, you have the guidance from the council?
Well, let's kind of talk through that quickly.
I'd like to talk about distance.
Okay, so I think it sounds like you're...
We got one more question, guys.
Well, I've already stated, I've already stated my position that I think it should be five hundred feet, not a thousand feet, but I don't know if we have consensus.
I thought a thousand feet was our common number, like for cigarettes, isn't it a thousand feet at this time? That's five hundred per, oh.
We don't have anything.
For adult entertainment businesses, it's a thousand feet. For liquor stores, it's five hundred feet, schools, parks, churches, and residential, and like-for-like.
Okay, can I raise an issue? And I find it's very ironic, I could walk into pavilions, or C V S, or any one of those that are in a residential, on the skirts of a residential neighborhood, and there will be hundreds and hundreds of square feet devoted to the display of liquor. And that's fine for me, because I like a good choice, but all those shelves are filled with liquor, and yet it's legal, as long as you're an adult, to go in it and purchase it, so why are we now being so concerned about another product that is a legal product to sell, and we're going to say you can only have sixteen feet of space? Whether it's tobacco or not, I mean, it's not an illegal product, any more than liquor is, if it has a proper stamp, so why is it treated so differently?
Well, in your comparison with pavilions, there is an exemption under the state alcohol beverage control that allows grocery stores to sell the liquor or liquor products, so they're treated differently by state law. We are analyzing a new trend that's growing in the city. There are issues relating to secondary impacts that are reasons why so many cities are moving forward. There are no restrictions on proliferation or saturation of this type of new trend. State law does have over-concentration or saturated requirements for liquor provisions. So, this is an area that is slipping through land use control mechanisms, so those type of businesses that you're referring to have already been regulated by the state.
Yeah, but Jim, don't they need a C U P to sell that liquor in Bonds?
Our municipal code may have a provision that states grocery stores of a certain size is required to have a C U P. I know for sure if you're a liquor store on Main Street, you're required, because it is through the Main Street specific plan.
Well, I remember hearing, when Target went in, we heard it.
So, as I indicated...
That would make no difference, you're saying if they want more than sixteen square feet, they'd have to have a C U P, which is the same as what you would need for liquor, then?
You can make that as a comparison, I'm not analyzing it in that regard for that purpose. There's a municipal provision that requires if you're going to sell alcohol, then you need a C U P. At the state location, there are some provisions that are exempt for grocery stores. That's what we're referring to.
Well, Jim, you're not saying that they can't sell electronic cigarettes within a thousand feet of a school, you're just saying that it can't be the exclusive business, it can't be a smoke shop, that's what you're saying.
If it is...
Pavilions can be within five hundred feet, or any store can be within five hundred feet of a park, but that can't be the only thing they're selling.
Absolutely.
So, following up on that, Bonds, Pavilions, Safeway could have a thousand feet devoted to e-cigarette display, because it's an illegal product, and it would not fall under the sixteen square foot criteria that we would be setting up.
No, because, you know, I hate to say we're comparing apples to oranges, but you have an establishment that's traditional, that's been regulated by the state. This is something that we're introducing to you that's not regulated by the state, and what we're analyzing is the difference between an ancillary use of a commodity versus one as a primary source of commodity.
But the way I'm hearing...
Bonds primarily is a grocery store, not a tobacco shop, but as among the items that it would sell, and I'm not picking on Bonds, any one of the major chain stores, John's, that used to be here on Main Street, would have done the same thing. It sells food and other items, and among the other items would be alcohol. So, because it's not a primary product, it's just one of them, it can have any display size it needs, or chooses to.
Well, if you want to look at, for discussion purposes, regulating Bonds, we can come back with an issue relating to alcohol, but I thought we're focusing on electronic cigarettes as a primary business that's moving into the city as a new trend. If we set regulations over Bonds, then they would change their traditional value as to what they represent in the community. Just as an example, just recently, pavilions here in our city, they reduced the size of the area that they market or represent for tobacco products. They significantly reduced the size. So, if Bonds wishes to reduce the square footage for alcohol, then, you know, that's something that they're allowed to do.
But I think the issue is, all that it requires is the C U P, so just like we gave the C U P to Target to carry the alcohol, then we could give a C U P to Target to carry a larger selection of cigarettes.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That's exactly, yeah, that's the way it is, but if it's under sixteen feet, then they don't need the C U P. Anybody can do it, and you're not, you don't need a C U P, and the distance requirements don't count.
Right, but if you're in the environment of a grocery store, and you want to buy tobacco products, you have to have the clerk go to the shelf and bring it out, and then you can buy it.
Yeah, and that's, I think, what Jim's trying to get at.
That would be in the same conditions.
Yes.
But they can have as much of it displayed as they want, you just can't, as a customer, you don't have access to it.
Yeah, but he's saying, I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what you're saying is, they need to have a C U P to do, to have more square footage of display.
That's correct.
And then they can keep all their storage in the back if they want.
That's fine, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, let's address that issue about the five hundred feet. Is that the consensus of the council, instead of a thousand feet? Make it five hundred feet of any other smoke shop, school, park, religious facility, or P S zone property?
Are we going to do five hundred feet or a thousand?
We're trying to decide what the amount of space is, what are we looking at? Five hundred or a thousand? I think it's closer to a liquor use than you are to an adult.
Right, that's the question.
Do you want a smoke shop within five hundred feet of a school? That's an example. That's a thousand feet, like McGaw, it'll be a thousand feet.
I have a liquor store within five hundred feet, so yeah, yeah, five hundred feet is what controls alcohol.
I'm for five hundred. There you go.
Okay.
Five hundred feet.
I think David doesn't care as long as we break.
Five hundred feet. Yeah, we're ready to go for a break.
Okay, so briefly, unless you want to take a break right now, it sounds like you're fine with the definition of smoke shops. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
The sixteen square feet, is that enough? It looks like we've got one over there, consensus?
Good for now, good for now.
Good for now, yes.
Sixteen, so we'll come back with an ordinance at sixteen feet. You're okay with the C U P requirement for all smoke shops? We've discussed the five hundred feet. You're okay with prohibiting smoking lounges?
Yes.
And? We haven't really discussed advertising, but...
I'm good with what Jim put in there.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
Okay.
Now, you make sure that we also have the use in public use. You can't use it in private facilities.
And finally, on existing uses, you're fine with applying all these rules to the existing uses?
What do you mean?
So in other words...
No grandfathering?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna take a break.
Okay, that's our consensus, okay.
This is Hubert Laws, and you are listening to 88.1 FM KJAZ, the home of real jazz.
Okay.
Oh, no way.
Okay, we're back in session. That's my one clarification.
We have a request for clarification.
With respect to the distancing requirements, we understand the direction is firing feet from residential zones, and churches, and educational facilities, and religious facilities. But the question is, do you want a separation of 500 or 1,000 between smoke shops? In other words, if you have a smoke shop at one location, should the next one be 500 feet away?
500 for me.
Okay, how about the others?
Right, question, a smoke shop is any establishment that devotes more than a certain percentage of its display to the sale of tobacco products?
Yes.
500.
Okay. There you go. Okay, next item is item L. This is the municipal code 705-120B. Prohibited animals. Permitted, excuse me. Prohibited, it says.
No residential. Quinn, did you include residential in that?
Yes.
No. You can't.
You're saying no, not firing feet from residential?
You mean if there's stores right next to a housing development?
I mean like the liquor store at Marina and Fifth. I mean like the liquor store on... What about Bonds backs right up there? What about CVS that's right there? I mean, that's all of our...
Smoke shops.
But that's if they choose to have more than 16 square feet.
Right.
And then you can't even get a CUP to override that. You'd have to get a variance.
That's correct. So, this is a time to give us direction. Is alcohol, the issue with liquor stores is that it's 500 feet from residential, but there's a number of liquor stores that were grandfathered in. The issue with Bonds and others is that they have a CUP.
Just on the top of my head, I cannot think. I mean Bonds is within 500 feet, CVS is within 500 feet. I'm gonna leave out the Main Street specific corridor, because that's a specific plan. We have Fifth and Marina. We have, isn't there one down that backs up to Bridgeport off of PCH there? I don't understand it, because I'm not seeing that.
Remember, this is liquor stores. So Bonds isn't considered a liquor store. CVS isn't either. We're talking about liquor stores that, the same as the concept of tobacco, of exceeding a threshold, is the liquor store primarily engages in the selling of liquor. And our provision in the municipal code says 500 feet from residential, schools, parks, churches.
Well, if we did that, we would preclude all of those people then from selling cigarettes as they do currently.
It would relate to any new liquor store that came into the city.
At that point, if we include residential, then I'd want to grandfather in.
Okay, so, as we drafted it earlier, the suggestion was 1,000 feet. It wasn't residential. And so what you're telling us is to treat it the same way, or they can still be next to residential. They can still get a CUP, provided they're not within 500 feet of a park, educational facility, religious facility, PS zones, which is public zone property, or other smoke shops.
You need to get a consensus, because I don't know.
Yeah, so, residential? We want any restriction on residential?
Is there a residential restriction on cigarettes at this time, tobacco?
No.
And we're gonna treat these items in a very similar manner?
That's what I was looking for.
No.
Okay, so there's two, three, okay. So residential is not, won't come back in the ordinance. There'll be no space or distancing requirement between smoke shops and residential zoning.
Can I just quickly ask my colleagues a question? Maybe we do need to look at grandfathering. If that's how all these are getting, all these liquor stores are in existence, through grandfathering in, then maybe that's what we need to look at, is that the existing businesses are grandfathered in. Otherwise, we're going out and asking all these businesses to change the way they're doing business today.
Is that a consequence of what we're gonna be doing? That we'd have to go back to them?
The ordinance would require existing businesses that are selling tobacco or electronic cigarettes to reduce their size area to 16 square feet of surface area.
What he's saying is that any of the businesses that are in existence today that are selling, that have greater than 16 square surface feet, will now have to get a CUP if they wish to continue business as they're doing it. So at that point, I say we grandfather in. Because everything I think of is backing up to residential.
You know, and if it's included with all tobacco products... They have floor-to-ceiling shelves in some stores that are filled with cigarettes behind glass doors, in some of the major markets. That's obviously far more than 16 square feet, or four feet square.
Some of them are, have any condition me that they're willing to comply.
So do we grandfather?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with that. It seems a little difficult to go in and have people do something differently than they're doing now, just because of this ordinance.
Can we limit the e-cigarettes in these existing facilities to a certain display size?
If we grandfather in existing businesses that are selling as ancillary product, we need to be able to identify the square footage of the area that they currently have to ensure that they do not expand that area. Otherwise, they'll no longer be considered grandfathering in.
Well, can we not grandfather, and can we limit the area of display for e-cigarettes?
My only question would be if e-cigarettes are less harmful theoretically than tobacco, why would we do that? Why wouldn't we treat it exactly the same?
Because they're already there. I mean, you don't want to reduce them, is what you just said.
But what if they already have them?
We don't want to let them go in with e-cigarettes. So the bigger display you have, the less definition you have of a smoke shop. Or many, yeah, smoke shop.
Then I think grandfathering is the better way to go, and then adopt your definitions.
Is the wishes of City Council, that was not a discussion item that staff has presented to you for grandfathering in.
How about if we come back to you, which is some considerations for you when we come back with the draft ordinance to talk about grandfathering in and some additional, that'll give us some time to do some additional research on what that actually means for this overall ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to agenda item L. Again, business for code 705-120B, and has to do with permitting animals. Ms. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, again, Jim Basham, our Community Development Director, will present this item. Jim? Pardon me, our City Attorney will present this item. I got the look, I'm good.
At the council direction at the last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, the staff has prepared an ordinance which would amend the ordinance that was just adopted, or is it with effective date of maybe in a few days, concerning pigs. And as proposed, and this is pursuant to the council direction, if you adopt this draft ordinance, people who own pigs of any size could apply for a permit to keep that pig. And it would go through the same process as the code provision dealing with non-domestic animals. And as part of that permit process, the city can apply conditions. They could also deny the permit, like any other permit, based on health, welfare, and safety considerations.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to ask that our City Attorney review any of the, any permits that go through. I'd like Animal Control to draft the permits, since they're the ones that deal out in the field with them. But then I would like our City Attorney to review it and make sure that it's all legal and applicable.
Every permit?
Every, every pig permit?
Yes. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any comment on that?
That'd be fine.
Started at four hours? You have to hurry.
Yes, only if it takes two hours, we'll do it.
What I did, when I, let's have, Jordan, do you have any comments?
No.
David?
No.
Every, none?
That one.
Mike?
My only comment was, I didn't see how you would, what would happen if we had noise problem, or if we had a, a, a.
Waste.
Health, health problem, you know, smell or something like that. I don't see where that's in the ordinance, how you're taking care of that issue. Are you revoking the permit with that?
Well, I think that that's what Animal Control drafts up, and that would be animal by animal, because this covers more than pigs. It goes in with the non-domesticated animals. And they know what issues they're dealing with, with each animal. And then when Animal Control drafts up the, the conditions, that they, because they're the guys that work with the animals and know what that would be, then they would pass it on to our City Attorney to look it over for legality.
So we're not in the permitting process of setting up the parameters of your permit?
Well, it depends on the animal, it depends on what property, it depends on a whole lot of things.
Do any complaints come to us, or do complaints go directly to Animal Control in Long Beach?
Well, they're supposed to go to Animal Control in Long Beach. So I know I give out that number when people call me on dogs and stuff, they go directly to Animal Control. Sometimes they go to our PD. And I know that we have officers who deal with Animal Control as liaisons. Am I right, Chief?
Yes.
You sound like Quinn's emails now. So I, what I'm thinking is that, you know, if the attorney finds something he thinks is odd or strange, then he'll call it to our attention. And the PD actually works with Animal Control, exercising that contract that we have with them.
Do we need to modify the ordinance so that it comes to you? We'll do that administratively.
Administratively.
Okay.
It'll reflect in the minutes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
I'd be to introduce the ordinance number 1635. Ordinance of the City of Seal Beach, amending the Seal Beach Municipal Code to allow the keeping of pigs with a non-domestic animal permit.
Is there a second?
David's second.
Second discussion? Oh, just point of discussion. In the staff report back on an analysis, number two says, grounds for denial are the following. Keeping the animal is not necessary for education or research purposes. I don't know, that's a negatively written statement that I don't, I don't really understand. But grounds for denial are the following. And that, and it doesn't say are among the following, doesn't say one of the following, it says are the following. So I don't understand what that means.
Yes, and so we're gonna take a look at the code to confirm that that particular section.
This is a pet, or this, this specific one is, of course, a pet. But anyone who comes to us for a permit for a pet, does number two apply to that, or is this just something that was included and really, I don't understand.
This is in our existing code.
I think that's how it describes the non-domestic animal permit.
Right.
It says may be denied for any of the following reasons. So you don't have to make all those findings, one, two, and three.
You do have to?
You do not.
Grounds for denial are the following.
Yeah.
But, but I, really, it should have had are any one of the following, or?
Include the following.
Yeah, if we were to quote the language of the statute, or the city's ordinance, a non-domestic animal permit may be denied for any of the following reasons. So that gives the, our officer the discretion to deny it for any one of these three.
And the operative word there is may.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote now, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I read the title. There was a motion and a second.
Please vote. That's approved by zero. Okay, new business. This will be the reorganization of the City Council. I will be the City Mayor through 2013. The new mayor will take office January 1st, 2014. What do you take that away for?
He's gonna be mayor, I guess.
I guess. The reorganization is selection in 2014, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. And Mr. City Attorney, will you handle this?
Yes, to begin with, we have the selection of the mayor, and the nominations for mayor are now open.
I nominate Mayor Pro Tem, Deaton.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
The nominations are closed.
I was gonna nominate, I have one nomination too. I'd like to nominate Councilman Mike Levitt, who'll be in his 10th and final year, and has done a good job as mayor in the past also. So I think.
You're in charge.
Yes, I am. Are there any other nominations? So nominations are now closed. Under our process, we, you take a vote on the first nomination.
You're gonna call for a vote, or am I calling for a vote?
Okay, so.
I.
Please vote for Mayor Pro Tem, Hillary Deaton, as our next mayor.
You ready for the surprise?
I.
This is five zero.
Thanks.
Yay, Hillary.
He's in charge.
I get this back.
Oh, I get it back.
She does.
I'm in charge till Jan, yeah, come on.
Go ahead, you're right.
January, you get it. But you're still in charge.
For the Mayor Pro Tem, so.
Oh, does she do it? Or you do it?
Incoming mayor does it.
There you go.
Incoming mayor does it.
Then she hands the gavel back to Gary.
There you go. Jesus.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to take nominations for Mayor Pro Tem for the year of 2014. Do I have a nomination?
I move David Sloan.
Okay, do I have any other nominations? Please vote.
Uh-oh, we're missing two.
Got my light on.
One more.
One, one light's missing.
Thanks.
That passes five zero.
Good. Congratulations, David. Okay, and now, I believe I, to the honors, next. First, Gary, I don't wanna embarrass you, but I have a lot of things to say.
Oh, my God.
All right. Patty, where's Patty? Did she leave? She stole a lot of my thunder today, Patty. I wanted to thank him for all his work that he's done on the Board of Directors for OCTA, and his work does not stop here. You have at least another year, right?
I do.
And you've done an excellent job in spearheading efforts to keep the Lexus Lanes or Toll Roads off the I-405 between Costa Mesa and Seal Beach. So far, the city's efforts have been effective, and we will continue to utilize Mayor Miller's expertise in this area to ensure that Seal Beach remains toll lane free. Also, Gary oversaw the completion of the Lamson Avenue Improvement Project, which has made the College Park East area tremendously safer while simultaneously improving the aesthetics of the roadway. And I'd like to congratulate you on that. It is really lovely. It really looks nice.
A lot of that goes to the City Manager.
Well, everything we do really goes to the City Manager. So court, and also you coordinated the efforts of the council to ensure the city met state compliance by implementing the 2008, 2012 housing element, as well as adopting the 2013, 2021 housing element. This was a contentious issue, but Mayor Miller made sure we stayed on task. During your tenure as mayor, Gary, you brought in a new police chief and selected a fine one for us, helped us to select a fine one, which was actually the City Manager's job. Sorry, I was misreading that. But you oversaw all of it and brought him on and helped him to continue his work in our city. Mayor Miller also directed council's efforts in completing the park's master plan, a document that incorporates the residents' parks and recreation desires for the next 10 years. You helped build a partnership with the Los Alameda School District, protect our kids by helping the district pay for an additional school resource officer. And throughout your term, Mayor Miller, you have attended countless ribbon cuttings and other ceremonies that spotlighted businesses, organizations, veterans, and others. But most importantly, you oversaw a balanced budget that is in line with the council's fiscal goals that has undoubtedly improved the quality of life for our residents. Thank you for all you have done. And Gary, I would like to say that I think you have led a very harmonious group this year, and I thank you for that.
I think he's got a phone.
I've got a camera. Maybe not a good one.
Doesn't this feel just like OCTA today, when they have that employee of the?
Yeah. Patty, you got a camera?
She's got a phone. Okay, ready here? Hand on the flap, they can't cut you out of picture. Thank you. Congratulations.
Have you ever taken a picture of Patty?
I haven't. I'm gonna bring this thing out soon, everybody. Okay, thank you.
You know, earlier tonight, when I was, when I was thanking all the staff, I forgot to mention, most important was the council. I appreciate all the council's help for this last year, and your support for this last year. It was very appreciated. So of all people to forget, it was you guys. I forgot, sorry about that.
Hey, I just say a couple of words. I know it's getting late.
Sure, go right ahead.
First of all, I'd like to introduce my family that's here. My husband, Ron, and my brother, Bob. You can raise your hands, and then they'll know who you are. And, you don't have to. And then my eldest son, David, and his wife, Shelly. Where did my son Dan go? He left. Got late for him, I guess. So Dan's wife, Carol, stuck it out. His little boy, Nate, his daughter, Rachel, and his daughter, Miriam. So they came tonight. So thank you very much for coming.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, just, first of all, Gary, I really wanna thank you for all you've done. We had a very important issue. It was the housing element. And thank goodness for Gary Miller, but he came through and really made it an issue. And the best part of it is, we won. We won the issue. And it was because of all the work of Mayor Miller, and I really appreciate it. Gary, you've set a high watermark for the position, and I know it's gonna be a tough act to follow, but thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, we're gonna adjourn tonight in memory of Bruce Monroe and Mitzi Morton, longtime advocates in residence of Seal Beach. And actually, I'm gonna miss both of them. They were exciting people. Bruce would always entertain me with his thoughts, and Mitzi often called me with her ideas. And also, we're gonna close in memory of Seal Beach Police Captain Gary Martin, Martin? Nathan, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, before you do the adjournment, we actually have a couple successor agency items we just need to do.
The script says I'm adjourning, and then I'm going to the successor agency. So I follow the script. The script comes from the city clerk, so I follow it religiously. With no objections, the city council meeting scheduled for December 23rd is hereby canceled, and is adjourned, we are adjourned to Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if necessary, and our mayor will be council, excuse me, Mayor Deaton. Sorry about that.
What about the successor?
We're going there right now.
Thank you.
On our way. Well, it's, you know, okay, successor agency matters. Call to order. I call the regular successor agency meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2013 to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Sarah Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Deaton.
Here.
Board Member Levitt.
Here.
Board Member Shanks.
Here.
Board Member Sloan.
Here. At this time, members of the public may address the agency regarding any items on the subject matter jurisdiction of the successor agency. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the agency cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the agency's discretion, be referred to the executive director and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. All, any documents for review should be presented to the secretary slash city clerk for distribution.
Oh, we have somebody coming up. All right. I know it's late, sorry. Seth Eker. It would be really helpful for the public. I think maybe the public is losing a little track of what's happening with the successor agency. Where is that money going? It would be really wonderful if we could get some kind of conclusionary report or staff report, kind of where we are, what money is there, where's it going, why'd it go away, something like that, just for your consideration.
Okay, we'll consider that at the next, Ms. City Clerk, Ms. City Manager, would you put that on the next successor agency to give a status? Okay, items on the consent calendar, we're gonna do the consent calendar now. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be in routine and are enacted by a single motion, with the exception of items removed by the agency members. Do any members wish to pull any items off the consent calendar? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? So moved.
Second.
Please vote. That passes five zero. Okay, with no objections, successor agency meeting is adjourned. We're done.